You good, Antonio? Antonio?
Sterile probably.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Fire Commissioners Monday, June 7th, 2021. Please rise.
I want to have a moment of silence for three firefighters who've lost their lives this past month. Dear God, we come to you and we give honor to those that have made an ultimate sacrifice in serving their communities they serve in. I pray, Lord, that you'll be with their families and give them comfort during this time. And, Lord, as always, we ask for protection for the firefighters here in Benita and first responders. Just watch over them, keep them safe, Lord. Thank you for what they do and the sacrifices they make each and every day. I just thank you for the freedom we have in our country and the ability just to gather in a place like this. Thank you for that and help us never to take that for granted. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Chilwell. Public comment on agenda items. Seeing none, need a motion to approve the May 10th, 2021 budget workshop minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion for the May 10th, 2021, regular meeting minutes?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One motion, May 2021 incurred expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial report, the acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts and budgeted purchase orders over 10,000.
I'll make that motion and then I have a question.
Okay, we need a second?
I'll second.
What's the question?
I would, I would like to know, let's see here. No, that's on something current. I skipped the question.
Okay, question withdrawn. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners business. Commissioner Maturro. Commissioner Casilla.
Yes, I received an invite from the Pennsylvania Wounded Warriors Incorporated. It says, Dear Commissioner Casilla, on behalf of the men and women of the Armed Forces and First Responders, we salute you for giving us the opportunity to invite you to the fifth annual Veterans and First Responders Golf Outing in Philadelphia. The golf outing will be held at the Union League Club on Monday, July 12th, followed by a luncheon and guest speaker, Maureen Wigle, who is a Deputy Adjutant General of the Military and Veterans Affairs for Pennsylvania. They even, even were going to fly me up to Philadelphia. I'd like to represent the department.
I think the thing, the concern that you had was that today of our next board meeting, I'm fairly sure that nobody has a problem with Commissioner Casilla missing the next meeting to go to the, for that honor. So, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
If, if I may, just to confirm that all of the three of you at least will be here at the next one because we, that's when we set the millage. So we need to have at least a quorum.
Is that the one we set, is that the one we set the millage?
Yes.
Okay.
On the 12th of July.
We'll all be here and I'm, I'm not sure why Commissioner Slackton is not here this evening. I was expecting him, so.
If it becomes a problem, I will back out.
Okay, well, yeah, as long as we got a confirmation.
Well, we know the three of us are going to be here, which is all we need.
Yeah, that's all we need.
And I'm sure that, I'm sure Commissioner Slackton will be here. Like I said, I don't know why he's not here this evening.
We've tried a couple of times and went right to voicemail.
Yeah.
We'll keep trying.
All right. Okay, and I have, I have nothing. So, turn it over to you, Chief.
Yeah, we have some 15-year pins. I, I will leave it up to the commissioners. If you guys want to do that now or do you want to go right to the audit and then come back to it?
You know what, probably, you sure?
All right. All righty then. So, as you see on the agenda, we have a group of personnel that have, have achieved 15 years of employment here, so we're very proud of them. In the past, you've, you guys kind of got what I do, so as I call each person up, I'm going to talk a little bit about them, give them their pin and give them their, their props. So first on the list is Andy Chicas. Lieutenant Andy Chicas, you know, he came to us February of '06, became a paramedic in, in 2010, you know, acting lieutenant in 2012. He got his fire officer one and two, then became a lieutenant in December of 2015 and progressed. Now he's one of our acting battalion chiefs. He just now started to act about a year ago now, so very proud of him. Came to us by way of the Navy, if I remember correctly. So stole another military guy, so he's a Navy guy. And he's got his instructor two and he's also, he's got his associate degree and working on his bachelor's right now. As we talked about in the past, you know, I've, I looked at his performance evaluations over the last few years, so I just pulled some, some things out there. Always impressed with the job knowledge. Meets or exceeds expectations. One of the most dependable people I know, always with a positive attitude. And, you know, those words were, were written by his battalion chiefs that work with him every day. You know, I had the opportunity to work with Andy on the shift too, so, you know, no truer words are spoken about Lieutenant Chicas. So, right now, I'd like to congratulate him for 15 years. Next on the list is firefighter Adam Nolan, again hired in February of '06. This whole group aside, except for Mike Burkhard, was all hired as a group, I believe. Maybe Adam came in a little bit later in the month, but he was hired in that group. He's a pump operator. Again, he is pulling from his lieutenants, who he works with throughout the year, demonstrates a strong functional knowledge of EMS and firefighting skills. Firefighter Nolan is the first to get dirty and get the job done. Cooperative, constructive, strong, reliability, fully prepared. Over the last, you know, let's say since Station 6 is open, Adam's been at that station, I'm sorry, firefighter Nolan's been at that station. He's taken a vested interest in ladder 26. He's one of those firefighter driver engineers that takes that truck to the nth degree. He, he takes pride and ownership in it. Anybody that goes out there and works with him, he takes them under his wing and says, this is the ladder, this is how you should run it, this is what I expect out of you as he's training this person. So he's that go-to guy. Adam is also, for those of you who know me, I'm very protective on certain things. Adam's one of the only ones that I've lit, really worked with PS tracks and moved things around and hey, because he's come to us, come to me and come to the administration and said, look, I want to move things around to make it more functionally easier to look at on, on how to check the truck out. So I've given Adam that responsibility as a firefighter. So, again, 15 years and congratulations to Adam. Next on the list is Lieutenant Regenbach. Again, one of the, again, I had an opportunity to work with, with Lieutenant Regenbach while he was on shift, hired in October, or not October, I'm sorry, February of '06. He's a paramedic, FO2, he's fire officer two. He's also started as acting lieutenant in 2015, promoted to lieutenant just about a year and a half, about a year and a half ago now, or almost two years, I'm sorry, June of 2019. Again, what's, what his lieutenant said about him and what his battalion chief said about him, because I pulled off the last two years when he was a firefighter and when, now that he's been a lieutenant. Great attitude, leads well, especially during training, works to make everyone better, self-motivated. And that says a lot about Andy. You know, sometimes it's a curse and sometimes it's a blessing to be out at Station 4 with administration because we see everything that goes on, the good, the bad and the ugly. One of the things I've noticed the last few, few, six, eight months, year that Andy's been promoted, he's brought his crew together. They're one of the tighter crews that I've seen lately that, you know, they eat together, they sleep together, they, they train together, they're out there playing pickleball together, they're, they're doing positive things on a daily basis. You know, and some of the, some of the other departments around here, it's just, it's fragmented. Hey, they go and do their own thing. It seems like to me that Andy has brought his crew together and he's trying to keep them as a crew and, and doing that. So I'm very proud of Andy when he does things like that. And again, some days it's a curse when you're out here and the white shirts walk across there and they're like, hey, what are you doing? This is what we're doing. So, but Andy's done a great job at that. The other thing I will talk about Andy is, you know, Andy's been on both sides of the coin. Not a lot of people know, when he was in high school, he got in a bad car accident and we ran the call. Actually, I think Leo ran the call when he got into a bad accident. So it's one of those things that, he's also been a customer. So, so very proud of Andy and again, congratulations to 15 years. Next on the list is firefighter Robert Schmidt. You know, Rob's one of those other ones that we stole from the military. He was in the Marine Corps and we, when he got out, we gave him a job, wanted him to be a firefighter here. So Rob's a, got his instructor two, hazmat, pump operator, fire officer one. He also is one of our ladder truckie guys. He is at our Station 5, right by Commissioner Lohan's house. So he's over there and I'll read some of those. Firefighter Smith's my right-hand man when it comes to truckie, when it comes to truck 25 related tasks, 100% on every fire and medical call, professional attitude. He's got a professional attitude, pride in his duties, tries to pass on to every new guy what he can learn. Again, Rob's one of those guys that when a new guy or a new person comes to that station, he pulls them aside and says, look, this is what the ladder truck's about, this is what truck 25's capabilities are, this is what I expect of you as I'm teaching you how to become a truckie or how to, how to drive that ladder truck. So again, congratulations to Robert Schmidt for 15 years.
That all you have?
Last but not least, Michael Picard Senior. And there he was. No, Mike is, you know, we give Mike a hard time a lot, but, you know, I like to reminisce a little bit about Mike is, you know, originally, Mike was hired to start out doing hydrants. Back in the day, we thought we were, 15 years ago, we thought we were too busy to go out and do hydrants and we didn't really want to do hydrants and painting and maintenance and, and so we said, let's hire somebody. We talked the administration into it and they hired Mike. Soon thereafter that, we found that, you know, there was a need for Mike. There was a need for that maintenance person. There was a need for what he does on a daily basis, which is keep, you know, we talk about our assets and we talk, we're getting ready to do the audit and I believe in the audit we have, what, 12, $12 million worth of assets? Or $26 million worth of assets? Mike keeps that running. Mike keeps the lights on in this place or the light bulbs at least in stock so we can keep the lights on. Don't know what we would do without him. He's the glue that kind of holds this thing together. You know, for 15 years, he's been, some, some years when there were lean years, piecing it together with a rubber band, some bubble gum and some hopes and prayers that we'd make it to the next budget year. But of late, he's, you know, he's been out there and he's kept our contractors and the, whether it's the lawn maintenance or the plumbers or the electricians that we have, keeps them all honest and keeps them, keeps them with stuff to do. So again, congratulations to Mike for 15 years. Mike was scared when he said, are you coming tonight? He's like, am I the only one going to be here? So congratulations to all.
Yeah, we'll second it. Yeah. If we can take a quick recess if everybody wants to split, go back to work or whatever you're going to do before you, we do the, do the audit, it's up to you.
Are you saying that nobody wants to stay for the audit, sir?
No, we do want to hear, as, as long as it's good news, we'll stick around, but otherwise I'm not staying.
It's 28 million worth of assets. I was close to 26.
Sorry, I didn't mean to run everybody off. Yeah, you, we'll, we'll take you next.
Disposals first, sir.
You want, I know, we, we can skip it and go back to it. No, I'm just saying that, well, let's, let's do this so that we don't tie him up.
Got you.
No, I, I appreciate you offering to move me up, but I, I like to hear, you know, what really goes on here other than the numbers. So, no, that's, definitely appreciate everybody's service for sure. I'll be, I'll be brief, but feel free to interrupt me as we go through this thing if you've got questions. For the record, I'm Jeff Brown with Ashley Brown and Smith CPAs and we're here today to go over your September 30th, 2020 audited financial statements. First thing I want to bring to your attention is on pages one through four is our independent auditor's report. So it's similar format to what we had last year. There's some kind of bold headings here describe sort of what the financial statements are, what management's responsibility is and what our responsibility is. But on page two, under the opinions section, it states in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities each made. In English, that's the clean, unqualified, unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you receive from an auditor. Basically, it means that the financial statements as they were prepared by your staff are in accordance with all the governmental accounting standards that they're required to be. We didn't have to make any changes, suggestions, there were no material adjustments that were needed to be made. So, you know, we appreciate their efforts, they do a great job. We can be a little difficult to deal with sometimes as far as, especially with what's been going on with remote and COVID and all that kind of stuff. So requesting invoices, bank statements, you know, and just a lot of the, the back and forth. So we appreciate their expertise and professionalism for sure. Page four starts the management's discussion and analysis and I encourage you just to kind of use this as a reference. You can flip back to it. It's, it's in a narrative format. It's not very long. I want to say it's five or six pages long, but it's got some financial highlights for the prior, for 2020. And it also compares fiscal year 19. It's got some charts and graphs and things in there, but it just provides a nice little overview of the financial highlights for the year. Financial statements themselves start on page 10, but if you flip over to page 11, this is what we call the full accrual version of your income statement, profit and loss. It's titled a statement of activities. So it, the important number on here is the third one up from the bottom that says the increase in net position was $3.1 million. So what that means is when you take all the revenues and all the word expenses key, so that all the expenses, which aren't necessarily things that you paid, things that you owe, it includes all the actuarially calculated liabilities that are in there. But the point is, a lot of that stuff you cannot control, but still, when you look at it in total, your net position is increasing as opposed to decreasing. So, you know, obviously a good thing for the district's sound financial position. And then if you flip over to page 14, this is a statement of revenue expenditures and that's the difference between the two, the two statements. So on this page, to give you an example, you buy a fire truck, you build a station, those are expenditures. So your cash went out, it's gone. So on this page, same thing, third line up from the bottom, on this schedule, the revenues exceeded expenditures by almost 4.1 million. So again, they're kind of saying, painting the same picture, the, you know, the sound financial position there. The notes to the financial statements comprise a lot of what's in this next section. I'm not going to go through all of that. A lot of it's the same as what's been in there. The numbers are updated, obviously. There's some schedules in the back there that kind of support kind of what Chief was going as far as with the assets. There's a, we call it a roll forward schedule, but it basically shows what asset you had at the beginning of the year, what the additions, the deletions, kind of breaks all that out by category. But if you flip all the way to the back to like page 62-ish, one of the things we obviously look at and test is to make sure you did not overspend the legal authority of, of the budgeted expenditures. So we kind of look at those in broader categories, but about two-thirds of the way down the page, that subtotal personal services expense, you are $1.3 million positive. So the total budget was 21.86 million. The actual expenditures came in at 20 million, .5 million, so 1.3 million to the good. And then if you turn over to page 64, the subtotal operating expenditures, the budget was 13.669. The actual was, was much less than that. I mean, obviously in there, you've got some contingencies and, and things that there's no actual amounts for, obviously. But even if you kind of back that out, you still are, are under budget there. And the same thing on the next little subsection for capital outlay, budget was, was much greater. So again, all those categories, no over expenditure issue there at all. Last couple of things. Back on page 84 is another one of our reports and this one's on what we call your internal control over financial reporting and compliance. There's two sentences here on page 85. The second to last one in that first paragraph says, given, during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we considered to be material weaknesses. And then again, a similar positive statement in the next paragraph that says, the results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. The next page is 86. This is our report to you, our, our management letter. There's references in here to Florida statutes, rules of the auditor general, all positive statements, not in the deteriorating financial position, no prior audit findings, no current audit findings. Again, all just positive, positive statements. And the last thing in here, page 89, there's another different report on your compliance with investment policies and things like that, but another required report that needs to be in there, but says positive statement, you complied with everything from a financial perspective that you were required to. So again, another clean audit, if you will, kind of your original question. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific ones you may have.
I guess the only, the only concerns we all have is what's going to happen in Tallahassee with audits from here. That's, that's my biggest, my biggest question and concern.
Big time.
Because they're, they're going to start, we're going to be starting to do things that we're actually already doing, but it's just going to be through a different process and it doesn't, it doesn't make a lick of sense, but.
It does not. I was just talking to Lisa before the meeting started. I mean, there, we were at the virtual conference thing and so I had the people there from town and just the things that they're pushing down, it's, it's common. Yep, unfortunately.
Well, we, we escaped this year, but it, it's not going away.
It's not, no, sir.
Anybody have any questions for you? Well, thank you.
Hey, you're welcome.
Great job.
Thank you. And keep in mind, you know, throughout the year, obviously, we, we work for you. You know, we, we, we're independent, we're, so if there's anything we can do to help, please reach out to us.
If you can keep Lisa straight, you're my hero.
We, we try, we try. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. You too. We need to go back and make a, a motion for item nine on the agenda for the disposal.
Mr. Chairman, you, you at least have to acknowledge and accept the audit so we can send it off to Tallahassee.
Oh, yeah, we don't need a motion for that.
We just got to acknowledge that you accepted consensus.
Everybody, consensus?
Yes.
We're fine with the audit.
No problem.
I just assumed that was done. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Jeff. Good to see you. Need a motion for the disposal report?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any old business? Because I skipped over that too. Anything we need to talk about?
I don't think we need to talk about the parade anymore.
No, that's done.
That's done.
I don't ever want to talk about it again. Chief, you guys got any old business that we have overlooked?
Not that I can think of.
I don't think so either. And then the final item under the new business, the new fees for CPR, first aid, we need a motion for that.
Yes, and it will be actually a resolution that you guys will sign later on.
Yeah.
We'll have, you, have one of you or two of you coming in and signing it.
So a motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion.
What are those, your fees?
Copy in your packet there, it's the CPR, first aid, we're just changing, I don't even, it's not even significant.
If we can get a second, I'll get a.
Yeah, we need a second and then we'll have a discussion.
So, so the reason for the, for the upping of the fees is in the past, we haven't been offering first aid. So now we've had a few companies come, Benita Bay and some other ones come and ask, can we do a CPR, first aid addition to that? So it's an extra two hours, so we just upped it a little bit and we stayed in, in line with what are we, what we've done in the past. If you're a resident here or you're a business here, we would cut you.
We haven't changed those in, got to be five years now.
Yeah, probably five years. But that's the reasoning for it and just for Commissioner Maturro, it's right now CPR and AD choking is 20 for residents and all others is 40. We're raising it up from, to 30 to 50, 30 and 50, 30 for residents and 50 for non-residents.
Well, we lowered it significantly than five years ago. It used to be 40 local. 40 for everybody, if I remember.
Yeah, it was 40 for everybody.
And we lowered it to half of that for Benita residents. And then, so anyway, all in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Chief, you're up.
I just have a few things. I'll try and make it quick. I'll go down the list. I know you said that, but I just wanted to give everybody, you know, the parade update, we are going to work with the city and do some type of parade. I know Nicole is going to work with Laura Taylor at the city, so I will keep you informed of it, of what it's going to be, what time, what our involvement is throughout the month as it, as it goes along. The other thing that we kind of briefly talked about at, at a workshop was Memorial Day, the city, the mayor's reached out to us and apologized for not, for the not getting the invite soon enough to, to be part of the festivities. So they've apologized for that and told us that it won't happen again. As you've seen on the text, property values did go up about four and a half percent. Those are the, as we call them, the soft numbers or the preliminary numbers, roughly $12.9 billion worth of taxable assets in Benita Springs. We'll get the further breakdown July 1st. We have been working diligently on, on the budget, so we'll have something for you at our workshop. And speaking of the workshop, I want to thank you guys for the workshop change and we'll put it out on email, I'm telling you now, but we'll put it out. I'll text you. It's going to be July 6th at 3:00. Just a reminder, business after hours this Thursday at the La Fontana. It's their banquet area for derumos here in town at the promenade. It's 4 to 6. So we've all been.
Dating again?
This Thursday, the 10th. In case you've seen it on the news, you saw training, was at the dog track all weekend, had our crews over there along with the other 11 other departments that support. You saw they were there yes, or yeah, yesterday, Saturday and Sunday. Both days got some good press, got some good video press and some written press on it. We even had our K-9 unit, our K-9 search dog come over from the other coast. So it was a good training. Also, just so if you hear it on the radio or see it on like the MERC pages, the boat's out of service for approximately a week. We know for three days, getting some new light, a new lighting package put on it and then we're trying to get its $500 service while it's out of, while it's out of the water now, but we'll know more by the end of the week. What else do I have? Engine 24 is on schedule. It's getting its radios put in tomorrow, so it's on schedule. Hopefully we'll have it in service on or before July 1st. My last thing is just FASD reminder on that on Sunday, just confirming that everybody, everybody's still good to go. And if not, get ahold of myself or Anna Marie. The last date for cancellation of the rooms is tomorrow. And that's the, my report is. the rooms is tomorrow. So, and that's the, my report is.
Thank you. Assistant Chief Scott?
Yeah, I want to make a comment about the chaplain who was out fishing last night. I heard, we heard about this early this morning. We saw the call coming and spotted, I don't want to speak for you, but I'm going to, spotted a jet ski, a wave on a personal line.
I saw that call coming.
No one on it. Called 911. Quick story. Our guy showed up, started looking, searching, took the guy out of the water, probably 300 yards offshore. I mean, been out there for an hour and a half, maybe?
He's five three-quarters of the line offshore.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
He's five hundred miles, 300 yards from the jet ski.
Okay. I'm just, this is the story, you know. I just wanted to make a comment because we talked about it, and he had the whereabouts to call, and we just ignored it because it was an empty detritus. And, you know, another hour, and it was pitch black, and that person may never have been found.
Absolutely.
Or at least, you know. So, real positive, that's how it starts. Awareness, made the call. So, good outcome. Good outcome.
Right place, right.
Yep.
Sometimes, sometimes chaplain, I feel like you're a pair of comfortable shoes. We just always expect you to be here and do stuff. And I think you're probably the most, the undersung person in this department. We really do appreciate what you do all the time. And I know you do a lot more than even maybe some people up here even know for the department. And every once in a while, it's probably nice to give you an attaboy, which maybe, maybe we haven't done enough of.
I enjoy it.
Well, that shows. Thank you.
Before we move on, Richie, Richie, with the, I saw some bills for the repair of the lift on the boat. Is everything all right with the lift? There was a lot, significant amount of money.
Yeah. So, a month ago, three weeks ago?
Yeah, three weeks ago.
The restaurant down there.
McHiggy.
Was relocating their parking blocks along the south side of the rest of the parking area. And the, the line, we ran the power from the building down to the lift, was in a conduit underneath. So, they were driving rebar. This is one of them. And they drove it through the conduit and into the.
Wow, that's a good shot.
Power wire. Nobody got shocked, but the lift got shut down. So, we had an electrician come out and take care of that. And then, we had to refasten the conduit up on the seawall back up. So, yeah, we had, we had a few repairs.
I'm not even going to ask the question why that was our problem, but I, I probably will.
Yeah, that's my first thought when he said it.
Sorry, Chief.
Yeah.
But that was the repair that happened. So, it wasn't the lift didn't fail.
Oh, it did it when you started it back up.
Wow. It was a glitch, but that didn't really cost, that wasn't completely part of the repair. There was a little glitch in the lift, but we straightened that out there. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at me for?
I'm not. I stand ready for questions.
We've got your report in the packet. Deputy Chief Madden, I guess, Brode?
He's on vacation.
Oh, okay. Again? Oh, no, just kidding. And Fire Marshal Westburn, thank you for your report. And obviously, Mr. Grant didn't realize that the meeting was moved a week ahead of time because he's not here. So, I see no public comment, take a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Thank you, everybody. And I guess we'll all get together. FASD.
Yep.
Thursday.
On Thursday.
You going to contact Slack though?
Yeah, and find out.
What he wants to do.
If he wants to go Monday.
Is everybody going to the Thursday after hours at the Chamber?